Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for May 30th, 2017, back to order. We started this meeting in executive session where we talked about collective bargaining pertaining to the golf department and reorganization. We also voted to, voted on a health insurance plan option, an optional health insurance plan, as well as deductible changes, which we will accept or call in the consent agenda next. The other thing we voted on was the Marini property purchase, which, the purchase and sales agreement, as well as the management plan, conservation management plan. And then the last part of executive session was pertaining to the town administrator's contract where we have made no decision yet. With that, I'm going to remind you that the town will be video, audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience that's video or audio taping must notify me now. Hearing no one, please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone for weekly briefing? Public comment and announcement. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, could I ask you to remove A and C from those?
Okay. We're going to take A and C up separately. And then the other one we're going to take up, I'm going to ask you to hold, is the E.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda. B, approve Howard's Employees Association side letter of agreement. D, authorize the chair to approve the proposal for the townwide radio system voted at the May 2017 annual town meeting. F, approve and sign the side letter of agreement between the town and unions to participate in the benchmark plans offered by the CCMHG.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve B, D, and F. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead and do number A, a letter A, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda. Item A, approve the minutes for, number one, May 15th, 2017 executive session, and two, May 15th, 2017 regular session.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve consent agenda A. Any discussion? All in favor?
I'll abstain.
Abstain.
Three ayes and two abstentions.
Three zero two.
Yep. And same for C.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the FY 2018 Human Services Grant awards as recommended.
Mr. Chair, I recuse myself. There are two grants in here for the Howard County Medical Council for site loss services. I'm an officer of both companies and I'm recusing myself.
Thank you. Moved and seconded to approve FY 18 Human Services Grant awards as recommended. Any other discussion on that?
No.
Chris, can you just give us a quick overview of how people, are these customary? Where does the money come from? Can you just?
Yeah, in terms of what we've done in the past, we did change a little bit this year. We have a human services grant just shy of $80,000. We do an RFP process, so whoever applied, we send notice to. We also do a notice in the paper. It follows, if you would, a traditional process. Obviously, we're trying to get into specific areas of helping kind of a social element for people that, groups that help people in certain need. This has been here since I've been here, Mr. Chairman, so I kind of inherited this, if you would. The one change that we had this year is, last year and previous years, the county did this for nothing. This year, they asked for 10 percent. I thought that was too high, so we did it internally. So, we did send out notice, put advertisement in, and then whoever put in in a timely fashion, we actually considered that. That's under procurement law. We did have a couple, as you'll see, that had received material or received money last year. They did not get their proposals in on time, and we can't, we can't accept them if they don't get them in on time, so that's why you saw a few of them drop off.
And how many, how many sent in responses to the RFP?
I think it was in there. What you, what you saw is what the proposals were.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we're on to the harbor. Approve applications for coastal zone management grant for Sacotucket Landside Project. Chris, reviewing the packet on this, I think we really need to get John to come before us. The proposal jumped from 3 million to 3.6 million, and almost everything in that packet has changed from what we presented at, or what we were presented to put this on town meeting.
Yeah, actually, Amy does serve on the Sacotucket Development Committee, so she can kind of comment a little bit. I did notice that, Mr. Chairman, going through the material. We did have a, the number of the 3.6, we have re-scoped that to try to reduce down. We had an opportunity, and I'm not sure when the deadline is, I think it is coming up, to be able to obtain grant funds to try to offset some of that cost. So, I'll let Amy kind of speak to the grant opportunity itself.
Sure. I can't speak to the budget discrepancies that you've seen between this and prior. The, I just, when you look at the budget spreadsheet, there's a couple of options, and with the ad alternates taken out, it's about $3.1 million. There's two grant opportunities that we're pursuing. John Rendon has applied for a Seaport Advisory Council grant of $1 million, and this is a grant that I put together for $500,000 to the Massachusetts Department of Coastal Zone Management. Unfortunately, I can't answer too many other questions regarding the budgeting. This grant is due June 5th. So, I would, I would like support from the Board of Selectmen to apply for the grant on behalf of the town, and maybe we can come back with John Rendon and discuss the budgeting for this.
And I don't have a problem with the grant, Chris. I do have a problem with the.
With the budget.
Mm-hmm.
I hear you.
And, you know, this project started at 2.5 million, went to three, went to 5.2, went to three, and now it's 3.6.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'd like to get an idea where we're going and who's actually running this project.
Sure.
Can I get a motion on the request?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the application for coastal zone management grant for Sacotucket Landside Project in the amount of up to 500,000 for reconstructing for resiliency at Sacotucket Harbor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application for coastal zone management grant as read. Any discussion? Don?
Mr. Chair, I just am hoping that implied in the motion is that the project as it currently exists is the cap to where we're going, that even if he gets more money, that we're not backing our way into a major restaurant or anything there, just because now we've got an embarrassment of riches that wasn't, you know, forecast at the warrant article.
Yeah.
I just want the board to know, at our community development meeting with department heads last week, it was discussed about the septic system for the new property, or for the, and it was decided not, I mean, to put in a new septic system, a new fast alternative technology septic system, but one that would not accommodate a full restaurant as was originally proposed. So, that was too much money anyways, and we got the feeling that the snack shack was what more people wanted anyways, so.
Thank you, Amy. I think, Chris, to Don's point, this is, I mean, and I've been clear from the beginning, it's not 3 million plus the leftover engineering money. It's not 3 million plus Bank Street.
Right.
Not 3 million plus these grants, it's 3 million, correct?
Yeah, town meeting actually authorized 3 million.
Okay.
So, any grant that we were to receive, we'd have to have a discussion, but, you know, as far as I'm concerned right now, by town meeting action, we're limited to 3 million.
Yeah, and these would be offsets.
And, yeah, I want to hesitate, because if they say we can't use the grant for an offset, then I don't want to necessarily hurt ourselves either.
Okay. Don?
But we'd still have to accept the grant, even if we apply.
You'd have to accept the grants, yes.
So, we have. Any more discussion?
No, I agree with that, because I think the implication of town meeting was, if we got a grant, it would go to reduce the 3 million dollars, not in addition to that. So, I think we need to be careful.
And I do think to the point about, you know, going from a snack shack to a full-service restaurant, you know, the motion was very clear that it's a snack shack. So, that, that component, we can't go beyond the scope of what was authorized at town meeting.
Thank you. We'll ask John to come in soon.
Yes.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up.
Let me just, let me ask Amy, so, you're ready to go with the application then, you and the?
What was that?
You're ready to go then with the application?
It's going out tomorrow morning, if I just have the authorized signatory page that I sent in. Yeah, I'm going on vacation, so, it's going tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is, under old business, is the process for tax lien auctions update. I asked for this. Amy is here tonight to give us an update. Going to remind everybody that Amy is a, I know this has received a lot of comments on the internet, and I've got a lot of emails. Amy is a department head here, she's also part of the community, so I want to keep this very respectful. Everybody can have their opinions, of course, but if it starts to get disrespectful in any way, I'm going to shut it down. Amy?
Thank you. Amy Bullock, treasurer collector. So, I have an update on the tax lien list. Right now, it stands at 122 parcels with a value of just over 2.8 million. We've collected 178,000 since the 26th of April, when the letters went out. I know there's been some discussion on how much notice people get before a property is leaned, and basically, it's four quarterly bills, a demand bill, a letter from my office, then a letter from the tax-taking attorney, and then a notice in the paper that's published, that's posted in two public places. So, there is a fair amount of notice before these things get leaned. Also, beginning in fiscal year 2008, real estate bills are now required to have a statement of overdue taxes on them. They don't have to have the amount, because that changes daily, but they do have to have that statement. So, that's on the current bills as well. And I also do have the tax-taking attorney with me tonight, Jim Capola, in case anybody has any questions for him.
Thank you. Chris, do you want to add anything? Or do you want to?
Yeah, I just at least wanted to, to comment. I know I had a couple inquiries specifically in regards to the Hawx Nest property, and I think that where there are properties, we have a little bit of a issue here in terms of, we look at things from a tax perspective. Are we collecting what we should be collecting? And if we're not, some other towns have less than 50 properties that are outstanding. We have over 300, and I think due diligence from a fiduciary standpoint almost begs that we try to reduce that number down to a more manageable number. But where there are properties, and one specifically Hawx Nest, that this board, the selectmen three years ago, wanted to target that property as a wastewater site, and after that, and we get it, that that wasn't going to be for wastewater, so I just want to make that clear. But after that, there was an effort by some of the neighbors to go to real estate and open space and consider having that property as conservation, because it's in a highly sensitive area. And I think that where the town is, well, was considering looking at that property to take by eminent domain because of a lot of issues regarding ownership, that it would make sense, at least from an administrative perspective, to bring that discussion before this board. And C, I think there are significant values to having that be conservation in terms of reducing the amount of properties that could be sewered, if you would. So, we, I don't think it's necessarily in the town's interest to have that go for residential development. And I think where a previous board was at least asked or made an inquiry about having that for conservation, that same request be made of this board, and C. And I think if there are other cases where the town, through its Real Estate and Open Space Committee, has looked at parcels that they have a public need for or a public interest in, then those ones should probably be taken off the list, because there is an intended reuse that the town would have. We would have to go through that foreclosure process and do that to secure those properties or take by eminent domain, so that wouldn't preclude, you know, us taking action still. But I think where we do have properties that haven't been fully vetted, that it makes sense. The other, the other thing that, at least, I think it would be irresponsible if I didn't, you know, I think that 178,000 is a good number that we've received, but when we have over $2 million, that's still out there. And, you know, I know the board is very concerned about trying to reduce the number of ballot questions that will be on, and having a large amount of money that we would receive in the form of free cash, if we are able to collect this, would be something that would help to create some additional financial security for the town moving forward. So, I do think this is a, something that we want to continue to, to attempt to pursue with the idea of trying to reduce the outstanding down to a more reasonable level.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Quick question, Amy.
Sure.
Can you give me the number again that's owed to us that's going to go for auction?
Right now, the list stands at 2.8 million.
2.8 million.
Just over, yeah.
Why is the $4 million number ringing a bell?
The whole entire list, before I took off properties, like miscellaneous parcels that, you know, they're not going to be economical for anybody to bid on, lots of payment agreements. I've had over 65 people either in the office or on the phone, not one of them upset. It's been, it's been really outstanding, and we've had 100,000 is payment, full payment on liens. So, it's not necessarily always a hardship case.
Right. The, on the 2.8 million, on the process, the legal advertisement that was in the paper mentioned it being bundled. Does somebody have to bid on the entire 2.8 million?
Whatever the list ends up at the very end, right, the day of the auction, the whole thing, right, they have to bid on the entire thing.
And what if they don't hit the 2.8 million?
They have to. I mean, whatever the value of the list is, then they have to pay. They have to pay in full.
Okay. I'm going to open it up for questions from the board first. Larry?
I guess I need to go back a step, because when I look at, you know, just Google tax liens, some towns are probably, will go after auctions as we're doing. I know some towns say, well, we're not doing that, we're handling it ourselves. And I guess my, my first question is, is what's the advantage of doing it by auction rather than us doing it ourselves? And then, I think we've all been looking at Facebook and so on, and the concern of rushing out and basically putting low-income people out on the street.
Right.
I think you already answered that partially, but that is your, how we handle people, you know, I know we give abatements and summaries, is there a process to help those, so this process doesn't do undue harm?
Right.
Those are my two questions.
Sure. I can remove any parcels that I want to, and prior to the auction, there, I'm not going to have any house that is owner-occupied on that list the day of the auction. It's just not going to happen. Let's see. I've got, 97 of those parcels are over five years old. They've been, they've been leaned for over five years, so it's, it's kind of a lot of old stuff that I'm just sort of trying to clean up.
Okay. And I, and my first part of that question was, why go to auction rather than go after it ourselves?
It just saves the cost of the.
Just resource?
It just saves the cost of the foreclosing.
Okay.
It's, it's very time-consuming and pretty costly, probably about a couple thousand dollars per parcel to foreclose.
Thank you, Amy.
Julie?
Yeah, I have a, I have a few questions. So, according to the list that I looked at, it's a, I had that 74 of the parcels are double digits, and that owner's unknown total 658,070. So, I mean, where we, we're in a situation where 658,000 are owners unknown, and that could potentially be land that the town could take with, with the right title searches, et cetera. And I know that costs money.
Right.
But I just think the overall value of that and what it could mean to the town is certainly worth that money. I also think that, looking back at our housing plan, we talk about trying to identify town land to work with developers to try to figure out some way to come up with workforce housing and such. So, to me, there are assets that I'm not comfortable in, you know, letting go, so I wonder that. I've also looked at other towns, and it seems that there are various towns that certainly don't do this. They look to handle it in-house, or they look to take the land.
Mm-hmm.
It also seems, according to the list, that a lot of it, a lot of these are, you know, FY 17, and then you say, like, probably five, five years, some of them are over five years old.
Yeah, there isn't any, none of the tax takings are older than, or newer, I should say, than 2015. That's the last taking year we did. So, what you're seeing for FY 17 on that list is what is currently due.
Okay. Okay, that was confusing.
Because, the day of, yeah, the day of the auction, whoever is the winner needs to pay for that, too.
Okay. So, and then I know that there's, you know, costs involved in trying to find these people, but this is just an example. I was just curious to see, and I happened to look at a couple parcels, look at the assessor's, you know, address block, and then Google them. So, for instance, I looked at Brian Cove in P-Town, and now, I'm not saying that this is adequate in the sense that the number could be wrong.
Mm-hmm.
We came up with even a phone number, and it listed this person as previous places in Hyannis, Brewster, and Howard. So, there's a chance that that could be that person.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm just wondering what more we could do to try to identify these. The same thing, I looked, I think it was another one, Barbara Adams, I looked at that and came up with somebody with that name in Falmouth. So, I'm just thinking that there's probably more research that we could do.
Yeah, that particular case, she actually does get an excise bill to that home address. I mean, we do look. We get a lot of mail returned, and we, every time we get a piece of mail returned, we look at the water bill, we look for excise, we do US search. So, we are trying.
No, and I know you are. I just, you know, to me, that, you know, if there's monies to be had, the value of that property, to me, says that it's worth spending the money to try to find these people and dig a little deeper. That, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Julie. Janelle?
I'm going to echo almost exactly what Julie has just said. First off, with the owner's unknown, there's more value in us as a town retaining these parcels, in my opinion, than auctioning them off, again, for housing or wastewater, whatever it may be. And then, as far as what Julie just said about even the value of the properties that are known, I still think that it would be worth the money to spend and the time to keep reaching out, and then ultimately, the town take ownership rather than auctioning it off to a third party. Can you explain what happens at an auction and thereafter? Jim?
Sure.
Thanks.
Good evening, Jim Capola, and I assist Amy in the collection of unpaid real estate taxes, and you all seem to have a really good handle on this, this subject. But, again, what was your, your question?
Could you explain for everybody what happens at an auction and thereafter?
Well, the auction process will take place, it's a fairly simple process. What is left over in properties and tax titles that are going to be included in the auction, they will be bundled together, and that's the way Amy has decided to handle the auction. And there will be one price for that, that bundle. The minimum bid by law has to be all of the taxes, interest, and charges due on the date of the auction. So, it prevents any of the potential bidders from bidding any less than what's due. But basically, it's, if there are multiple bidders, they can bid, that minimum amount might be 2.8 million dollars, and they can bid on that. It may, might exceed that, that number, depending on how competitive the bidding is. So, once that auction is completed and there's a successful bidder, then there's a document that's recorded. It's an assignment of all of those liens to this private entity who has acquired these liens. And that private entity takes the place of the town, so that entity can go forward and foreclose those liens. And then ultimately, if they're, they're either going to get the taxes and interest that they paid, or they will get the property through, through the foreclosure process. So, that's, that's basically the way it goes. If you retain these liens and you don't sell them, then that's the same method that the town would take to go through. It would be the same process, foreclosing in the land court, and the completion of that, it would either be redemption, payment of the, the amount due, or acquisition of the property.
Thank you.
Don?
I've got two different lines of questions. One is, you got a legal advertisement out there in the newspaper that, to the public putting them on notice, that, and I quote, unless the same has been paid in full before that date, that you're talking about bundling them. And, I mean, I was a professional contracting officer for 10 years. I don't quite understand how materially changing the amount of money that's involved with this, it doesn't change the scope of what, the action you're taking. You've got the public on notice that these parcels are here unless they're getting paid. How are you taking off the Hawx Nest property?
We can take off.
It's not being paid.
Right. We can take off, Chris and I had a discussion about that, and we, you know, we decided that we thought it was probably something the town would end up being interested in at some point.
That wasn't my question. I was just, on a legal basis, what would stop somebody from enjoining you from removing it by saying that, okay, you had to preregister? And the mechanism that seems to have this stuff drop off is that somebody's in the process of paying, and that's what you put the public on notice for.
The ad that I, that we published is kind of a standard ad. They can be removed for other reasons besides payment, just as, you know, I would take off a property that was owner-occupied as well. But there, there's partial payments, there's full payments, and then there's also parcels that, you know, if the town does have interest in, I can remove them.
I'm not sure under what mechanism. It's a legal thing that I'm asking.
Don, I'm going to let Chris chairman on this one.
Yeah, I, I'm going to defer to Jim as the attorney, but I do believe it's part of the statute that gives the treasurer the authority to make that determination.
Yes, that's correct. It's, it's under statute, and it's not really, it's an advertisement, but it's really not a, anything contractual that's happening with the notice, and the treasurer has a right to remove those, not only if they're redeemed, but also for partial payment situations, if the owner files for bankruptcy before the auction takes place for, or for any good reason. And it's just a matter of removing that, that property or properties, and, and what you're auctioning off is what is available at the time, what you want to include at the time of the auction. So, the, traditionally, the, and I can't cite a specific wording in the statute, but that's traditionally how these assignment auctions work. But the treasurer, it's done under his or her authority, and she has the right to remove any property from that, from that, the auction.
After preregistration?
I would say yes, after preregistration. There's no, and the statute doesn't require preregistration. This is an added requirement that the town is placing here, and it, obviously, it's, it's a necessary requirement to have preregistration. But I, I think all these, in this process, these bidders who are, are not unsophisticated in this process, know, know what will happen, that some properties will be removed. For instance, you talked about the owner-unknown properties and having a high value. There is very little likelihood that if those owner-unknown properties are included in this bundle, that the bidders who are going to bid are going to want to bid on the whole bundle, because those owner-unknown properties, very difficult to foreclose, very unlikely that, that the taxes are going to be paid, and, and the, the worth of those properties is variable to these bidders. So, that's not, those aren't properties that are going to be desirable for these, these, these companies, these private entities to bid on. They're, they're looking for the, the properties with buildings on them, properties that are likely to be paid off, properties that have a set value, a good value, if ultimately these investors foreclose on the properties, so.
Thank you. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up, because this is an entirely different line of question, but we've talked about the law tonight. We've talked about free cash. We've talked about the time involved. We've talked about the lower cost to the town in the process. The only thing that's missing from this discussion, we've never talked about the people. I'm a little concerned in looking at the advertisement, because I know myself, just casual scanning of this thing, I could come up with at least a half a dozen people who have estates where I know who their heirs are and where they are. Why haven't we made any effort to just get out of the office and knock on a door here and there for the ones that are here as opposed to owner's unknown, out of town, or things we've taken off? I just don't get it.
Yeah, I, I mean, we do, it's probably time, mostly. I mean, I do send out numerous notices, and these things, all these properties were advertised when they were initially taken as well, in the paper, and posted in two public places.
It's, it's not to badger, but the only comment that I have to make on this is irrespective of the time. of the time, when people get themselves into trouble, and some of these people would be in that category, you're not the only person standing in line for money. They're getting phone calls, they're getting letters from, demand notices from a lot of people. At that point in their lives, they're hiding under a bed somewhere. They don't want to talk to anybody. I'm not even sure that they would have opened up the, never mind signed for, return receipt letter. The one thing that's missing here is the human component, where we went out and actually looked somebody in the eye and said, "You owe money. Is there anything we can do to get this thing settled?" I'm disturbed that we didn't make a proactive move on that. There's a big difference between what you're legally obligated to do and what you morally should want to do.
Mm-hmm.
Chris?
Just to that point, I certainly don't want to be accused of being, you know, heavy-handed. We have run this list through Council on Aging, just as a, for instance, to see if there are people that are in that situation, Don, so that we can reach out and get some kind of sense for what their situation is. You know, the other thing is, I think Amy's done a great job of kind of meeting with people. In most cases, these are people that inherited property, they didn't know they inherited the property, or chose not to fully follow up on inheriting property, and we're just trying to clear up ownership. The one thing, Mr. Chairman, I've been in this business for a while, and I know I went through in my last town, a foreclosure process to obtain property. And, you know, if, I'm trying to remember the exact details of that, but I thought just the filing fee alone was close to $500, and I had to go into Boston for basically a day to testify. And, you know, when we say, let's switch it over to the town and have the town do it, you know, we're talking about a fairly substantial commitment to make in regards to some of these. And I think this is an opportunity, you know, really what we're trying to do is, other towns have less than 50 properties that are in this situation. Ninety-nine percent of the people pay their taxes. We're trying to go after people that have five years plus or a minimum of two years to try to rectify these properties and move on. So, you know, I think the board needs to know, and maybe Jim can speak to, you know, what the process is for us to go through foreclosure. But I think, you know, doing title search work, going in and testifying at land court, and doing the filing fees, you know, you're talking about potentially $2,500 per parcel to pursue. And I'm just kind of guessing it. I'd rather have Jim comment more specifically. But, you know, it's a major commitment to go through. On those ones that, you know, have value, like in Hawx Nest case, I think it's worthwhile to go through that process. But some of these other ones, you know, quite honestly, I just, I don't see going through that, and why not let the private sector do what the private sector does well?
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, and to Mr. Howell's question, as far as notification goes, this assignment is not, once this takes place and a private investor acquires a lien of an individual, this doesn't change the position of that individual. That individual is not prejudiced at all by this assignment. This individual doesn't pay any extra because of the assignment, has to pay the same amount that that person would have had to have paid the town for the assignment. So it doesn't change that situation at all. That person still has an opportunity to pay the taxes, do the foreclosure process. In fact, that individual, once the assignment takes place, has the option of either going by law, going back to the town and saying, "I want to pay you, I don't want to deal with the private investor," or he can go to the private investor and pay off the lien. Obviously, if he goes to the town, the town then reimburses the investor. But my point is that the individual can still come to the town, doesn't have to deal with the private investor to pay off the lien. And then, Chris is right about the process. It's expensive, and we do this, so we understand the costs and so forth. Those costs come back to the town if the taxes are paid and the lien is paid off. We collect not only the taxes and interest, we collect the costs, and they come back to the town, but that money has to obviously be paid upfront for us to do that work. And through the foreclosure process, once this assignment takes place and these private investors go through the foreclosure process, the most basic requirement of the land court foreclosure process is to, it's required that the owners and anybody having a legal interest in the property be notified before the foreclosure can be completed. If the court isn't satisfied that that individual is, hasn't been given proper notice, then the court will not enter a final judgment. So really, during that foreclosure process, notification, and it might be going through vital statistics and probate records and knocking on doors and having deputy sheriff serve notices, but the land court has, it's a very, it's a constitutional standard, so it's a very high standard that the court holds the private investor, not only the private investor, but the town to if we go through that foreclosure process, so.
Thank you. Janelle?
So if we are, if we sell all of these parcels to a third party, the town gains $2.8 million. But looking at all of these, the value, the assessed value, not the owners unknown, but the, let's just take the ones where we know the owners, the assessed value of all of these parcels is far more than $2.8 million. Even if the town were to take, let's say, it looks like Sykes Properties, there's a number of them, and we were to invest that $2,000, $2,500 to foreclose, we still would gain more than $2.8 million, would be my guess. Have we thought about that?
We can do that.
And it would only be a couple of the parcels, right?
Right.
So imagine, I mean, I personally think we should, as a town, not sell this value, these valuable assets to a third party, but instead help our citizens. And for the people who don't want to pay their taxes, then guess what? We will take your money. I mean, we will take your parcels by foreclosure, and we will then sell it on the open market and gain our money that way.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the foreclosure budget that is always in the budget every year is $25,000, so that would be maybe 10 parcels a year. So it would take a long time to get, to get there.
Budgets can be manipulated.
Hold on one second. So any follow-up from the board? Go ahead, Julie.
So just, just to go back again to a couple of these questions. So how do we determine when it is a primary residence? How do we know that?
That's a little bit tricky. What I've been using is looking up water bills to see whether or not there's water usage, and if the bills are paid or not, excise bills. Eventually, I'll probably end up driving by.
Okay. And in terms of the, you know, when we're looking at other towns and what they have, we don't really know what that 50-in-one town is. We don't know that they've already, you know, maybe washed their lists and they're looking at other properties.
Yeah.
Do we really know we're comparing apples to apples, I guess?
I did do a survey for local towns. Barnstable, of course, has a lot. Barnstable has 361. Sandwich, which is bigger than us, has 152. Mashpee, which is pretty comparable to the size of Harwich, has 80. Brewster, 28. Yarmouth, 32. Eastham, 32. So they're pretty low compared to what we have.
But do we know that they've got owners unknown on their list?
Not as many as we do.
Okay.
I think Brewster said they had maybe six.
So that's my question here. It's like, we can't even, there's a lot of other towns around us that don't do this. And then on top of it, we've got towns that are probably not including certain types of parcels that we're including. So there's that. I guess, you know, the other question I have, that this wouldn't be so labor-intensive, and again, I'm not saying you would knock off a ton with these, but, you know, if you look, if you looked at the book and page and went to the Barnstable Registry of Deeds, free access, and I know you guys probably have full access, but if you look at that and then even look at some of these people who might have been from off Cape, there's usually an address in there at the bottom to say where these people live and where the deed gets mailed originally. So, I mean, that's just another piece of information that's worth following up on, because, again, if they've, if they've gone, if they're dead or whatever, you might be able to at least have some sort of living relative in that town. That doesn't cost a lot of money. So I think that's worth our effort, too. And to Janelle's point, you know, the value of the property and what we're going to get, I think, really needs to be looked at closely. And so what is the process if we wanted to withdraw? What, is there a process to withdraw from an auction?
I can just cancel it.
Okay. And there's no cost to the town other than the registration fees or?
There's no registration fees. The only thing that we've spent so far is the advertisement, which gets divided up amongst the properties. So that added like $13.83 to each parcel that was advertised.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to the public. Larry, did you have one more?
Yeah, I just had a couple follow-ups. Because we are trying, yeah, I think we need to realize that, you know, for, the rest of us paying taxes are paying the taxes for the people that aren't paying taxes. And so we need to figure out a way, and I think you're trying to figure out the most efficient way of trying to gain those revenues. If you do foreclose, and we go that route, can you give us a schedule of when that might, what the timeframe with that would be?
Amy, will you just lift the mic up for me? Thank you.
There's a high difference there.
Thank you.
It takes a minimum of nine months to complete a foreclosure case, and that's probably the best-case scenario. So I would say between eight and 14 months to complete a case.
So maybe you could give us a quick chart or something comparing the two on how we come out revenue-wise. And, you know, we want to do humanely, but we don't want to sit on this forever either, I don't think, and get the money. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, and I represent, I represent Sandwich, I represent Yarmouth, I represent 70 to 80 municipalities in Massachusetts, and this has been my practice, my father's practice, basically representing municipalities in the foreclosure of unpaid real estate taxes. That's all I do. So I have a lot of experience in this field. And I was telling Amy, my basis is with municipalities, but over the past five to 10 years, this new frontier has appeared, these private investors who are looking at this process to take advantage. 16% interest, that's a substantial return on your money. What you're getting is, and I see most municipalities who have a backlog like you do, looking for a way to really bring some revenue in, to clear up some of these old liens. And it is expensive to foreclose these liens. So what you're doing is having that money come in immediately as a benefit to the town. And what you're giving up is control of these liens. So you're getting paid as of a certain date, and that's, you know, and that's the end of it if they're assigned. If they're not, going through the foreclosure process takes time, it takes money, but at the end, you may get redemption, but you may get some valuable pieces of property. And then ultimately, you can sell those properties at public auction, and you retain everything that you get. There's no requirement to pay any excess to the former owner. So that's a benefit. That's what these companies are looking for. They don't want the properties that are worthless, that have a lot of years' taxes on them, that are assessed to owners unknown. Those properties aren't valuable to these investors. The properties that are valuable to the investors are the properties that you're most likely to collect on. These properties that Amy's collected on, the investors would have loved to have those properties because payment came in so quickly. So these investors aren't going to want the owners unknown, the less valuable properties. So that's the trade-off, getting these, this money in quickly and having that benefit you financially, or going through a long process, drawn-out process, to foreclose on these. The communities who are most likely to go through this process are ones that haven't actively worked these liens. They haven't, they've let them sit for multiple years. So now what do we do? We need a huge budget to begin foreclosure ourselves, so this is a way to generate this income. So the communities who work on these year after year after year, and Amy is brand-new, and Mary McIsaac before her, they wanted to kind of change the landscape, and they brought me in. But before that, really, these tax titles had sat for a long time. So that's what it is. Basically, it's that trade-off, and you have to decide, well, do we want this money to come in? Do we want this now? Certainly a benefit to the community, or do we want to look at this long-term? It doesn't happen overnight to reduce this inventory. It takes time. But if you work it long enough, my experience is that you will benefit, that your liens will decrease. But again, it doesn't happen overnight. So that's what you're looking at.
So two questions, and then I'm going to, one question for you is, someone has a tax bill of $2,000, one of these tax people buys that $2,000. A week later, they contact and make contact with the owner of their property, and they say, "All right, I'm going to pay my taxes." What do they make at that point? What does the investor make?
They make what they paid at the auction, the $2,000, plus 16% from the date they buy the lien to the date payment is made. And then they'll have costs, phone calls or whatever, that they'll add on to that fee.
Any idea of costs?
They, it depends, they'll probably charge an hourly rate, and it depends on how much work they do, how many letters they send out, how much time they spend to contact those individuals.
Okay. I'll get back to that at the end. And then how do you get paid?
How do I get paid?
Yeah.
For the work I do, I get paid hourly for the work I do.
By the town of Harwich?
By the town of Harwich, yes.
Does that go against tax bills, Amy, or we just pay that?
When he's doing the tax title work, it goes against the tax bills.
So you divide it and give it to the tax bills?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to open this up to the public, because I think the board could continue to ask questions. Jim, and then Bob. And then you've got to stand up at the microphone.
Hi, Jim Chevry from East Harwich. It seems to me that I'm universally hearing from everybody that this seems to be rushed. I first heard about the list 10 days ago, and I've talked to several other people that are involved in this, and they started hearing about it around the same time. The problem with that is that the auction's on June 6th, which is next week. The Real Estate Open Space Committee doesn't have another meeting until I think it's the 15th. It's after the 6th. I'm worried that we're going to lose a lot of land that the Real Estate Open Space Committee, for example, may already be looking at. I know that the members of the Real Estate Open Space Committee, some of them that I've spoken with, were shocked to see that Hawx Nest was on that. I understand Hawx Nest has since been taken off of that list, and I hear Amy say that, you know, anything can be taken off the list. But what I'm worried about is that no one's really had the time to look at the list. We have a committee called the Real Estate Open Space Committee, and I've been to several of their meetings, and I wouldn't be surprised at all to hear that some of the parcels on Amy's list may also be on the Real Estate Open Space Committee list as parcels that they're looking at for various reasons. And I'm worried that there's a disconnect here, and maybe a lack of communication. And I'm really hoping that that can be addressed, but I'm worried that with the June 6th auction, there's no way that's going to be able to be addressed. So I've heard people say that we can just not have the auction. I think that, at this point, we should not have the auction, and everyone needs to slow down a little bit and maybe take a look at it through various committees that are already in place. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Bob?
I just wanted to bring this up, that a lot of the problems are not assessed properly, so it actually doesn't have anything to do with the tax collector. That was basically what I wanted to mention. Like, I even told the old tax collector, who owns certain things, and he still wouldn't change the, who the bills are named under. A lot of them are owners unknown or whatever, but, so a little more research on the assessor is probably, would cut down greatly on the list.
Thank you. Linda, you were up. Peggy, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm Peggy Gabor. I've done a lot of research with the third-party investor sales in the various communities. This is a community of 12,000 people. It is being compared, I believe you're from Southbridge?
Originally, my last job was in Southbridge.
Right, and you referred to that as how well and successful this kind of program was there. Is that correct?
I indicated we had some success, yes.
And how many people live in Southbridge?
17,000.
Okay.
17,000.
All right. Well, there's no- Well, there's no exclusions or exemptions to this sale. As much as Ms. Bullock mentions that she's not going to sell primary residences, the law doesn't say that, and the law is written that there are no exemptions. There's no exemptions for elderly, there's no exemptions for over sixty-fives, there's no exemptions for anyone. A couple of the larger cities have a history of using this at one point due to economic depressions. And the city of Lawrence used this program with these investors and found that it had created horrendous problems, far worse than what it resolved in the free cash flow. They had more homeless, they had elderly people, they had to house, and the list went on and on of problems. Clearing titles became a problem, and so they now do everything in-house. They don't use investment purchasers anymore. There's a lot of stories about investment purchases and how they foreclosed on people. They've come back to say, if you want your house back, we'll sell it back to you for twenty-five thousand. And of course, these people are already experiencing hardship. They cannot purchase their home, and they have to leave their home. There is a bill in the Senate to stop this open law. They're trying to put exemptions into the law. There's various amendments being added to exclude anybody over sixty-five, any primary residences, et cetera, et cetera. So there is a law to try to stop this behavior, because it's gotten out of hand with these third-party investors. Another issue is that this town loses control of itself. Once these investors take the property, they can pass it on to another investor in Delaware, New Jersey, California. And we have no, the town loses any identity of who's got the house, who's got the home, who's owning the land, and what they're going to do. Title issues became a problem. So I don't think this is the direction that this town should go forward in, in satisfying its lien issues. It's an issue that has been here for quite a while, and I think that perhaps a look in to see how Eastham and Brewster managed to keep their cash flow, the liens low, and maybe see how they're effectively working with their community to keep their liens in-house, and to respect the community and the individuals, and care about them. Thank you.
Hi, Linda Sebula. I'd like to say that if, I think that this is a good idea, because clearly the town has fallen down on collecting these liens and letting it go, because this is the kind of outcry that people have. I'd have to say that I wouldn't agree with just exempting everybody over sixty-five from paying their taxes, because there's an awful lot of people in this town who can pay their taxes, and to exempt them just because they're of a certain age doesn't seem appropriate. I also will say that if you are going to cancel this so that we can do more research, and all these lists have been around, because I've been in town for a long time, this has been a conversation that has been around for at least ten years, if not twenty. So there's a point where you do have to do something. If we are going to, if you're, you know, you're going to pressure Amy into canceling this, so that everybody can relook at lists and decide what they want, then I would say put a time limit on it, because otherwise, five years from now, we're going to be doing the same conversation, because nobody has had the time to look at the lists, and everybody's been fiddling and diddling, and we end up still in the same place. That two-point-eight million will be four-point-eight million, yes? So, I mean, there is a point where you have to pull the trigger, and you have to do something. I think the commentary of pulling out the primary residences, I'm sure Amy appreciated all the comments on how to do research, all my conversations with her, I don't, she's not that dumb. So I think that if you are going to pull it, give it a timeframe in which everybody has to look at the lists, decide what they want to do, and then go ahead with it. Because we can't let this go on forever the way we have. We have been very poor at this.
Thank you for your comment. I'll just correct one thing. I don't think anybody up here called Amy dumb, referred to her as dumb, they just asked questions as concerned citizens. And for two and a half years I've sat at this table, with you for one of those years, this hasn't come up in two and a half years. Not when I sat at the table. Next up?
Yeah, hello. Good evening, Selectmen. My name is Patrick Otten. I'm, live in East Harwich. I'm just sort of overwhelmed by the number of problems that this issue has rolled into one package. But one question I have is, why is Harwich singled out to have such a large number of defaults? We mentioned other towns that have small numbers, small numbers, and all of a sudden, Harwich is at the top of the list. So what's going on there that Harwich is behind the ball? Okay? And why does Harwich wish to outsource this problem to third parties rather than deal with it internally? People, person factor was a huge discussion here. Why aren't individuals being met? Why aren't individuals being talked to? Okay? It astounds me as well that I can get maybe seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar property, a million-dollar property, just by paying the tax lien. Right? What's that? I mean, that's ten times, fifty times I can gain in value in property just by paying a tax bill? That's phenomenal. Why isn't the city considering that aspect? Most important for me, though, is I live in Harwich for the open space. I really appreciate the open space. That's where my heart lies, and that's where I exist. And it would really be painful for me to see an open space area sold to a third developer just to put in more development without consideration of, first, Harwich Conservation Trust, or the Real Estate and Open Space Committee, dealing with those properties. I appreciate your work, I appreciate the ability to be here and stand before you, and thank you for the discussion, because it's opening my eyes to how complicated it is.
Tonight, I came here to try to convince the tax collector to give, to put a lien on the property, but not to put it for auction. I'd like to tell you a story. In nineteen thirty-eight, I was fourteen years old. We had a very poor crop on our farm. We owned a four-acre farm. It was my mother, my brothers, four brothers and four sisters. We were unable to pay the taxes. We had paid the taxes every year and never been late. But that particular year, we had the farm, the corn worms got it, the potatoes were marbled, the vegetables blight got the vegetables. And when you have nothing, you can't pay. Myself, I own twenty-five pieces of property in Harwich that I know of. When I buy a piece of property from you, I know right where it is. But I bought a piece of property from Danny Moszervi that belonged to Oren Eldidge, Stanley Oren Eldidge's son. And of them parcels, I probably found six parcels. I gave the Town of Harwich, I had Jimmy Fowler make the deed for me, I gave the Town of Harwich all the land along Forest Street on the east side. That consisted of half of, one quarter of grassy pond, starting at Carding Machine Brook, where the little old houses, little old buildings is gone. And all the way out in the range of Mount Pleasant, the Pleasant Cemetery. I, the summer, now, I'd like to ask, in the twenty-five parcels that I own, do I own any taxes? I don't owe a dollar's worth of taxes, because I know where they are. Recently, what, two of these, two of these parcels of land that came from Danny Moszervi's deed, one is a large area, and one is an acre and a half, I found that out recently. I'm asking tonight if there's any possible way that the tax collector can give, can't stop the auction, put a lien on the property for one year. I'd like to tell you another thing. When we, when our property had a lien way back in the years, my mother and I went to the town office. The town office had three selectmen, Charles Chase, Charles Moody, and Gerstam D. Hall. And the tax collector was Cox and Kay Burris. My mother explained what had happened, and they agreed that everybody would have a two-year exemption, could redeem their property, but they would pay the taxes, pay whatever is due within you two years, or goodbye property. I think they were very fair. We don't, we don't seem to be having that right now. I, I can't understand why it, we, people haven't been given more of a notice. How much notice have you given them? How many weeks, or is it months? I don't think we've given them much to tell, come in. I would hope they would give these people a chance, including myself. I got two parcels, I think, out there in Eddie Quill's sand pit. I don't know whether, whether they're large parcels, one's a large one, and one's a small one. There's also two parcels there that probably contain ten acres, that belongs to Stuart Harding's son. Stuart Harding died, and he left it to his son. And the man is so sick, he don't even know where they, he's tried to sell it, and they tell him, you don't own it. It's a damn shame for something like that to happen. And it's right beside a piece, a little acre and a half, I don't give a damn if they take it an auction, but here's ten acres, he could have a chance to sell it and pay his taxes and have a little money in his pocket. He's unable to work. I think we should begin to think about some of the older people that are not, you know, living in their houses, but they're wondering if, how they're even going to eat. I don't know what would happen if we didn't have the food pantry. Go up there someday and take a look, and see what's happening. Harwich people, not all Dennis, Yarmouth, Bunsen, just count the Harwich people that go there every single week to get their commodities. Years ago, when I was a boy, a boy, they had, in the exchange hall, they had what they called commodities. And my family was very happy to be able to go and get the same thing that they're doing now in the food pantry. So I, I think it would be very reasonable to stop the auction, charge sixteen percent interest if you have, whatever interest you have to pay, and give them a chance to own their land and pay for it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I find some irony here. We, Fire Department returns about one-point-five, one-point-four million dollars in ambulance receipts. We send bills to people that are sick and injured. We're talking about people here that aren't paying their taxes. And in my view, you have two groups. The ones that can't pay, and Amy has already said, she's addressed that, and I believe that, I'm a compassionate guy myself, and for the record, I don't agree with ambulance billing. And then you have the people that won't pay. And to Larry's point, I pay my taxes. I support the community, I raise my children here, and it's done through tax dollars. And if we have an element out there that just won't pay their taxes, then that's unacceptable. Another point. Years ago, we had a task force appointed by the Selectmen when we went through, you know, some tough times here, a review task force that went, was appointed by the Selectmen and went back to every department, including the Fire Department. And they wanted to know how we did business, how we bought things, how we hired people. And it was based on a business model. Mr. Chairman, you know as well as I do, we don't, we're not in business. We serve people. But that was the push, to do things more like on a business, like, plan. And this is what happens. I can remember many town meetings where the discussion was, why aren't we going after properties unknown? Why aren't we going after people that don't pay their taxes? So the ebb and flow of government has come full circle. She's doing her job and being criticized for it by some, and that's unfair. If you want to change the parameters of what she's doing, that's fine. But she's simply doing her job. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Bob Thomas. I'm vice chairman of the Real Estate Open Space Committee. I will say that we were quite surprised at the short notice and the decision to go to auction, since, as Chris knows, since he's sat in on many of our meetings, we've spent years, I've been on the committee, talking about various parcels of land, some of which are on the list. I'm glad to see that one in particular was taken off, but there are others that we have talked about. Whether they should be on the list or not, I can't speak to that tonight. But we would have preferred to have been consulted about that list. That notwithstanding, I would say that there is a point to be made, Larry Valentine made a good one, and that is that for all those people that are not paying their taxes, the rest of us are paying for them. And I don't own twenty-five parcels, I just own one, but I don't believe I owe you a dollar either, so, I know I don't. But I would only offer this, that should we somewhere along the line decide to cancel the auction, after we found that a hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars or so were paid up by this subsequent hanging-over-your-head of possibility of losing the property, should we cancel the auction, how much leverage would you have to go back after the people that still haven't paid their taxes, whether it be done internally or third-party? I question whether or not these people are going to be threatened enough or nervous enough to think that we're going to take any action at all. I think they would think that we basically have empty mitts. So I, I would want the board to think about that before we took that type of an action. Thank you.
Thank you. So, a year ago, when I wasn't listening, we had a presentation on tax liens. It went away. It came up four weeks ago with a date for an auction, and the amount was about four-point-eight million, I believe. We had a follow-up meeting with Chris and Amy and myself, where she sat at a table with a stack of envelopes returned to center this big. To Norm's point, I haven't heard anyone criticize Amy. I'm hearing a lot of criticizing the process. A year ago presentation, four weeks ago, a date, and an auction. Since that four weeks ago, the number is now two-point-eight million. And one story, walking through town hall last week, there was a young man at the tax window. I asked him how he was doing, and he said, great. And a sigh of relief, because he read in the newspaper that he could have a payment plan, and he wasn't going to lose his property. And for the accountants in the room, I believe that we charge sixteen percent interest on these tax liens. Where else does the Town of Harwich invest its money where they're making sixteen percent? And what are we going to do with this two-point-eight million dollars that we get? Is there a plan for it? How quickly are we going to spend it? We just spent about twenty million at town meeting with seventeen-hundred voters. Does this have to happen this quickly? I'm against the auction, and I think that we should, to Linda's point, we should come up with a plan, and we should look at it. But we are a small community, and ninety-nine percent of the people shouldn't pay taxes for one percent of the people. But how are we sure that we haven't missed somebody? And how are we sure we're not going to take their And how are we sure we're not going to take their land? That's my point. So, quick follow-up from the board, and then I want to end this subject so we can get on to the next.
Yeah, I'm ready to end it, too. I would like to delay the auction. For one thing I'd like to, to Jim's point and Bob's point, go back to real estate and open space, because they've been looking at this for some years, of trying to prioritize those areas that we may want to purchase for, whether it's open space or economic development. That was a change some years when they were looking at opportunities when something would fall in and have an overall plan, and that should continue on. I do agree that a plan, and we need a date certain, that we don't carry this on forever so people know what's happening.
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, this is not our action, so a motion's really not.
It could be.
Go ahead and tell me your thought.
Just, Mr. Chairman, you know, I think it's, I want to be careful here, that I don't think it would be appropriate for the board to place pressure on the town treasurer to take a certain action. I think it's suffice to say, you know, I've sat through this and, you know, obviously have listened very carefully. I know Amy has also sat and listened very carefully, and, you know, I'd like to have an opportunity to kind of chat with her and see, you know, what makes sense. I'm a little bit torn, because certainly we don't want to hurt people unnecessarily, but we also have 65 people who have come forward, which is really what we're trying to do, reduce the list down to as low a number as possible. And to kind of forego totally, we're kind of doing a disservice to those 65. And I think, as the fire chief indicated, you know, we have to be, have some integrity to the process and letting Amy do her job effectively. But I think that, you know, I'd like to have a discussion, does it make sense, maybe with Mr. Coppola, you know, what are the options? I can tell you, you know, going after $2,000 and spending, you know, $2,500 to get it just doesn't make any sense. So there has to be some thought. In terms of the real estate and open space, you know, we can certainly get that list and see what those are. But I'd like to come up with an opportunity and a plan to see, working with Amy, what kind of makes sense to maintain that integrity. Because I think waiting 10 or 15 years to get to, I mean, this wasn't built up overnight, this was built up over time. And sending a new message and getting people to pay is something that I think we want to head towards, being more responsive.
I agree.
All of this is well and good, but we're out of time. I mean, I would, I did want to make what I believe to be an advisory motion, because we currently don't have the statutory right to tell the town tax collector what to do. But the law may actually change in the near future, because there is a bill in the Senate relative to that. So if no one seconds it, that's fine, but I'd like to make a motion to request the town treasurer to postpone the tax lien auction until June 30th, 2018, in order to collaborate with the Real Estate and Open Space Committee, the assessor's office, and engage more proactively with contact to those who are in arrears.
I'll second that. Okay, so we moved and seconded to request. I'll start comment on this. I'm in full agreement with Chris Clark, and I think the town administrator should sit with the tax collector and have the conversation. And I don't believe by motion, this board should be sending a message to a department head. Larry?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I would ask Chris to come back to us and, and a date certain, Mr. Chairman, of either next meeting or before June 6th, with what direction that he's come, that they've decided on.
Thank you. Julie?
I'm comfortable in any which way we handle it, where it's looked at more closely, the town administrator, that's fine with me. I think that, you know, sitting here, understanding, and please, Amy, I hope you know that we really appreciate the hard work you do, certainly not criticizing you, it's the process, and we're just trying. To me, this is new. I've not dealt with this tax lien issue before, and I appreciate knowing and learning more about it, but there's, for me, a lot more to learn. So I just say that to you out of deep respect. However, I also think, sitting up here, we were voted in to protect the assets of Harwich, whether that be, you know, land, monies, whatever. That's, to me, the overall job. And although it's not under our authority on this particular occasion because of statute, to me, doesn't lessen the load that we're here to protect Harwich and its assets. So I would appreciate looking at it, collaborating with the real estate further, the assessor's office as well, and even, like I say, that, you know, the free access, you know, to look up book and page, you know, there's just different avenues. And I think that there's a lot of different issues here that we need to acknowledge.
Thank you. Janine?
To your point, Mr. Chair, we as a board cannot direct a department head. So I would like to amend the motion to request that the town administrator ask the department head to postpone the auction.
I accept the amendment.
Moved and seconded to ask Chris Clark to ask the department head. And I will offer the same comments. Chris has already asked to do it. This board doesn't have to take a position, I believe we already have. Not one member of this board has spoken in favor of this auction. Amy has listened, Chris has listened, the town administrator has offered to have that conversation and get back to us, and I don't see the need for a vote on this. I think we're overstepping it. Start with Don. Comments on any further discussion?
Have my say.
Julie? Larry?
No.
So we're going to go to vote on this, because there is a motion. So all in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
I'm opposed, because that was the...
Julie, we've got to go back to Julie, we might have another one here. So again, all in favor?
Aye.
You're in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Larry and myself. Request is made. Okay, on to new business. Request for license agreement for Robert Fratus to create a safe and adequate access to his parcel by upgrading Hawx Nest Road from nine-foot dirt road to 18-foot wide gravel road. Bob, I'm going to just have Chris do a quick report before you speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, from my perspective, we have a request for the selectmen as town, own town property, you act as the roadway commissioners, that anyone that wants to come on to a town roadway and do work should have some kind of agreement to do so. So that way, there's a clear understanding between the two parties in terms of what's expected to be done, and that we know the time in which that work will be done and what that work will be. I believe that this is really a protection. I would say, at least in other towns that I've been in, this is a fairly straightforward process and something that the selectmen usually do sign off on before allowing people to come on and kind of do work on a public way. So what, to that end, I know that the planning board had a meeting, had a discussion about it, and working with Ally Sabatino, the town planner, we came up with this concept of doing a license agreement, just to make sure that we outline that and what the work will be done, and again, the time. And if there is any liability to either of the parties, what happens if the work doesn't get done? What's the recourse for the town? So we did draft this, and we have it, and have had it presented, and we did send it to our attorney just for review. One of the things I try to do to decrease our legal costs is we kind of draft things internally and then just send it for review. So I appreciate Ally taking a model that we used in another circumstance to come up with this. So I think that I would at least request the board to hear the proponents' request, and that I have not yet heard back from the law firm that there's no problems as to form. So any vote that the board takes tonight, if they're okay with the license agreement, that you would allow that motion to have town council's approval as to form, that we don't have any glitches to that. But I understand the work needs to get done, and we want to progress, and I do think that this is a roadmap to move forward.
Thank you, Chris. I notice our town planner and chairman of the planning board is here. Ally, will you give us an overview of the work that he wants to do? And I know that at the planning board meeting, you read a letter from Chris Nickerson as well, and I believe he's in support of this.
That's correct. I have it here, if you want me to read that after I kind of give an overview.
Thank you.
So the applicant, Bob Fratus, has approached the town with an application to improve a town right-of-way, Hawx Nest Road. Right currently, it's a nine-foot wide dirt road, and he would like to improve the property, and correct me if I'm wrong, to 18-foot wide. It has been circulated to different departments, and the planning board did post for a public hearing on it. It was held at our last meeting, and it was held open, just to make sure before, so that the applicant had time to go in front of the board of selectmen and make sure that you were okay with it. So I can read a letter from Chris Nickerson that we were, the planning board received. Like I said, the other departments, the town engineer, the fire department, they were all fine with this as well. It also went to conservation, and they had no concerns either. So this is letters, memos from Chris Nickerson. It says, "I have reviewed the plans submitted by Robert Fratus for the second round of improvements to Seth Whitefield Road. I would like it to be noted that some work has already taken place by Mr. Fratus as his subcontractor along the stretch of road prior to permitting. The highway department would like to request the right-of-way be surveyed and staked by Mr. Fratus prior to the commencement of any work, any further work, to ensure that all activity is taking place within said location. Once the survey is completed, the specifications for construction provided by Robert are satisfactory with this department. The department will also assume maintenance of this portion of Seth Whitefield Road once the work is completed and inspected and accepted by our board." So in essence, they were okay with the proposed changes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Basically, the portion that starts, well, if you went from Round Cove, you would be heading toward Queen Anne. It's basically 1,000 feet, and I did the 1,000 feet before that, like five years ago, and it'll look the same as that when it gets done. The only problem we have is I don't have the power company 100% lined up. So I'll have to widen the road, and then I could come back and have to dig it up to put utilities in, or poles, or whatever they deem they want to put in.
Okay. And you've been given the specs from the highway engineer?
Yeah, basically, they like T base, so I put down like six inches of T base.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to questions from the board. Larry, you started to stand, do you have anything to add?
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm going to start with Larry.
You know, listening to the planning board meeting, I think my only question was, was the fire department happy? Because that's the reason that the roads are, they set the parameters in width and height and so on.
Well, this is the first for me. Usually, it goes the other way. They want to make things narrow or not wider. So I commend, I commend the applicant for going from nine to 18 feet, and that's a problematic area for us. So this will be a welcome improvement to that road.
Thank you.
I have no other questions.
Julie?
I don't have any questions.
Janine? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a few questions. I went out there today, and it seems like the improved section previously, I pasted off, it's about 26 feet wide in that section, which is, I gather that was done without any agreement previously, or am I wrong?
I don't know where it's 26 feet wide. The only place it would be there is right where I stopped, and that's only because every person on earth drives down there and turns around, and turns around, and turns around. That's probably the only spot that's wide. Everything else is probably, it probably would be a little wider because of utilities would, you know, has to be outside of the 18 feet. But it's basically 18 feet wide, almost the whole thing.
And this is more or less a comment. I can't begin to be prepared to vote on this, because I've got two pages of attachments that are blank. We don't have the locus. We don't have where it starts, where it ends, and the sketch of it now and the sketch of it later. It's there, there's a placeholder, but we're agreeing to something that's essentially open-ended. We don't know where it begins, we don't know where it ends.
Chris, you want to, I mean, my sense on that, Don, is that the highway engineer has laid out the specs, asked him to stake it and bound it. It's been staked and bounded. We're agreeing to give him a license agreement to do it, not to relinquish our rights to the road, not to give him the road. We're voting to give him a license agreement to do road improvements based on planning board and highway director's specs, not our specs.
Well, that's my point. I went out there today, and I couldn't find any stakes. And I did find, I've got a picture of the 26 feet wide, if you'd like to see it.
Where was that roughly?
It's with the boulders.
Yeah, that's the only reason that's why there is, because every person on earth drives down and does a U-turn. That's why. I can't stop.
So in my mind, we're voting, Don, on a license agreement, and I did also drive down there. I happened to spend probably three days a week walking the dogs in there. I found the flags just driving down through. And I got to compliment the applicant on the work that he's done already. It looks a lot nicer down there, and it's nice to be able to drive a vehicle through there. My hopes is the town will consider eventually extending it to Spruce Road. It's a state park, it'd be nice for everybody to be able to drive through there and enjoy it. And it is a town road that was laid out, I believe, in 1800s, 1850?
1850. Plus, this section is bounded, it's basically perfectly straight. If you go down the Round Cove Road on Hawx Nest, there's a big bound right there. I don't know how you missed it, but it's right there. And at the beginning, there's a bound, this is on the forest side. And right where your 26 feet is, is a bound right there, too, that I put in. But that one section's only wide because every, like I said, everyone does, puts, I had to put those boulders in because I had so many trespassers and people throwing stuff out there, and too many U-turns, so they U-turn now into the forest. But the whole road isn't, that one little section, maybe, is that why.
To my point, there are two ways in here. I mean, I took my kids around Cove, where St. Peter's Church is, for years. I thought it was the other place, because when I found the Exhibit A was blank and Exhibit B was blank, and there was no explanation about where the work was being done, I went as far as I felt comfortable with going by going down Hawx Nest Road. So I saw no bounds anywhere. And, but that only underscored the, where's this going to happen part, because I didn't go the right way.
Well, from Round Cove toward Queen Anne, that's...
I'm going to open it up to public, and I guess, I'm going to reiterate that this board is to approve a licensing agreement. Planning board is to approve the plan. Highway is to make sure he does it correctly. So where it is to us, I'm not sure how relevant. It's Seth Whitefield Road that runs to Round Cove Road. With that, Larry, if you could stand at the mic, please?
Mr. Chairman, Larry Brophy from the planning board. I, like everybody else, took a ride out there, too, and I did find the bounds. And they weren't all that difficult to find, and if that's what he's going to pave, the least, I mean, if that's what he's going to do, it's not a problem the planning board has any difficulty with. Eight inches of, you know, pavement he'll put down.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, I'll open it up. Comments from the public?
Peggy Gabor again. This road and the area that it's in is part of the Sixth Pond Special District. This is a scenic corridor. It's listed in the information online, and it is a protected roadway. And there are severe, or not severe, but there are restrictions to the roadway and to how it's affected. The goal is to keep the area with natural habitat. There can be development off the road, however, it's got to be curb cuts only. And the road is basically to be maintained as a nine-foot roadway. Nobody has mentioned anything about the Sixth Pond Special District and its restrictions.
Just clarify for the board, it says online that it has to be maintained as a nine-foot roadway.
Yeah, there are statements to that.
Statements?
Yeah.
That it has to be maintained as a nine-foot roadway.
And I also spoke to Mr. Nickerson today in response, to his response to the planning board. His statement to me was he did not take any consideration of the Sixth Pond Special District or its restrictions on roads, one of them being the Seth Whitefield Road, also slash Hawx Nest Road. He was simply looking at the plan that was submitted, the application that Mr. Fratus Fratus had supplied in 2008, and that was his only basis of opinion. He did not look at the restrictions on the area for the Sixth Pond District.
Thank you.
Well, there aren't any restrictions on the road and the road's laid out to thirty-three feet back in, in the eighteen fifties, it was taken as a highway because it was probably equal to one thirty-seven at that time. And it was surveyed in nineteen, nineteen or nineteen twenty and the plans are on file at the registry, so it's a thirty-three-foot laid-out road.
Thank you. Chris?
Well, I think the intent here under the license agreement, to your point, Mr. Chairman, is that if, if planning board has done their due diligence and have the, they're confident of the roadway light, you know, with, really what I'm trying to accomplish, you know, five years ago, if we just let somebody on and do work on a public way, we're not protecting the town's interests. So what this effort is, is to protect the town's interest in terms of, you know, really the, the process in which it gets constructed. If someone's hurt during construction, who's liable for that, that element? So this is about protecting the town's interest during the construction of this section. So I do apologize, we should have had all the attachments in there because it should be a more complete document so, so folks understand what we have for you. Probably two avenues to go down. If you want to defer this to the next meeting, we'll try to fill in some of those blanks and get that. Take a look at the, the element of the, the, how the town acquired the property originally as part of the roadway to make sure that there's no issue. And if we're having the attorney look at it as to approval to form, we can certainly look at it from that component. Or the board can approve the license agreement and defer to the planning board for the, the width question and the distance question.
Go ahead, Stina.
I mean, I have a map right here that was given to the planning board and Don can look at it right now. It's pretty straightforward, if that's what helped.
Thank you. My sense is we should be having, we should do a motion pending planning board approval. Larry?
That was, that was going to be my statement. Our, our agenda item tonight is to look at the license. If there's a question about the Sixth Pond District, that should go back to the planning board and I think that's a separate discussion from ours. And I would, Mr. Chairman, in that regard, I would move that we approve and, and the, get this language right, approve the request for a license agreement for Robert Freitas to create a safe and adequate access to his parcel by upgrading Hawksnest Road from a nine-foot dirt road to an eighteen-foot wide gravel road.
Pending?
Pending referral back to the planning board.
Right. And authorize the chair to sign?
And authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
And just legal, that, make sure that legal comes back.
Does that get enough in there?
Yeah, I think we have plenty in there. Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Four one. You have your license agreement approval from us pending their decision, but you had to go back to them anyway.
Okay.
Who seconded that? I didn't.
Me.
Janelle. Sorry. Larry, when's your next meeting?
Wait until tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Board of Selectmen reorganization for 2017 and 2018. As required by the charter, second meeting after the election, we are to reorganize the board and that means new clerk, two new committee members for the interview committee, vice chair and chair. So with that introduction, I'll open it up for recommendations on slate, comments, starting with anyone.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we assign as a board Michael McCaskill as the chair, Julie Kavanaugh as the vice chair, Larry Ballantyne as the clerk, Janelle Brown and Donald Howell as the interview committee.
Is that a motion?
It's a recommendation.
It's just a recommendation. I want to hear other, other recommendations or if somebody wants to go to a motion with that, but let's, Don, thoughts?
I agree.
Julie?
I'm fine. I agree.
Larry?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Yeah, I like to interview the committee better than the clerk because it's more fun.
Don't we all?
But you took notes tonight in executive session. That's why I said that.
All right, so.
My further comment, however, is, is a more serious note is, and I like the slate that you proposed, I would like to, in future, go back to what we, you know, history's not always the best, but I like the idea of a rotating chairman. You know, we have a new, we have two new members, so it makes sense to continue where we are. And because, I'm not saying anything against chairman or so, I think it's just an opportunity to move it around. It's a huge amount of work being the chairman and I appreciate, Michael, you taking it on, but.
Yeah, I'm open to anyone else who wants to be chair, so.
And so, and.
But I'm not afraid of it.
Just the idea of rotating it as a sort of a informal policy, I, I like.
Don?
I agree in concept, although having waited four years to get to that point the first time around, it doesn't always happen that way. Some of it is just what happens. I mean, there's been a big churn on the board here. I've talked to various members and asked them whether they wanted to or didn't want to. The rotation becomes easier if you actually had some experience with it, you can hand off because you know. This is one of those transitional years where, I mean, Julie's going to be the vice chair she wasn't before and I think that that's an excellent opportunity for her to get ready for that. Janelle could do the same thing next year.
I pass. Way too much time.
I'm not pressuring you. It's three hundred, some odd days away.
Can I get that in form of a motion? Janelle?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I move that we reorganize with Michael McCaskill as our chair, Julie Kavanaugh as our vice chair, Larry Ballantyne as our clerk, Donald Howell and Janelle Brown as interview committee.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve slate as read. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Onto the town administrators' report.
You have your selectmen's schedule?
Selectmen's summer schedule. Any more thoughts on that? I think that.
I like to revise when that came out because you did include the 12th, right?
That's correct. Maybe just for folks at, at home, the, the selectmen's meeting would be June 5th, June 19th, July 10th, July 24th, August 7th and August 21st and then reconvening, I guess, September 5th, the day after Labor Day.
And first one?
I believe it was, August 7th was going to be the, the date for the non-resident taxpayer meeting.
We don't have, I mean, the 12th is not, we don't necessarily have to close. We only had two members that weren't going to be there, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. You could, you could do the 12th if you wanted.
I'm going to leave the, I'd like to leave the 12th on there, knowing that we're going to have two gone, but if we have business to do, we should do it. If we don't have enough, we don't, we cancel the meeting.
That would be my suggestion. You don't, look at it, you don't have enough and cancel it.
Okay, just in terms of that, in time schedule, we are trying to do refinancing of our bonds, I'm sorry, our bands, bond anticipation notes. So we will be looking for a date, probably, you know, potentially the 19th, so we will need to make sure. I think the latest we can go is the 19th. We're already going to go on the 12th. We could do that, but obviously, that's important business for the town to redo our bands.
We had a lot last year and I just would hate to rush. If we don't have anything, we cancel. Okay, now onto the town administrators' report.
So that was by consensus to adopt the schedule, but keep the 12th?
Yes.
Right.
I mean, I'm fine with it if you want to meet. I just can't be here.
Julie's fine.
Yeah, I can't accept that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had two items tonight and these are more just follow-up items from, from previous discussions and how the board wants to handle these, I'll certainly leave to the board. The first one is a memo that I sent out regarding permitting related to beach nourishment. I just wanted to try to provide a little bit of clarity. We had issues come up in, in regards to beach renourishment. We did submit an application to the, the necessary state agencies to complete that. We were looking to do all along the coastline, renourishment above the high water mark and we did select certain areas to do it below the high water mark. We, we have subsequently withdrawn that.
Can you guys go out? Thank you. That's okay.
We, we have administratively subsequently withdrawn that. So what we're trying to accomplish here is to do a town-wide permit that instead of having localized permits that last five years, one town-wide that would last for ten years. So just as, I know that was more just a topic that had come up. And then the, the second is more a request for the board to consider a policy in regards to how we do beach nourishment and I've laid out a prioritization, if you would, of beach nourishment and we have some images from coastal zone management. They look at almost a hundred-year, yeah, over a hundred-year period of time for how erosion and accretion has, has worked. And I think it would be worthwhile to have a discussion. Certainly, I know Public Beach 22, there was a fairly lengthy discussion about it's eroding and, and we should, you know, potentially, the town's ownership would go because the par, the parcel that we own is underwater. If you look at the history of that, it's actually eroded and accreted over time. So I, I think that that's one, under the suggestion here, I made a suggestion in terms of prioritization, I think all town assets need to be preserved and protected to the best of the town's ability. But certainly, public beaches where we have parking lots, that we can actually have larger groups, that should be really a high priority in areas where we get sufficient accretion, where there's not been a track record of, of erosion that, to keep that. And then the secondary would be town properties that, similar to Public Beach Number Two, where it's more of a localized beach, there is no public parking, so it's really for a neighborhood beach, if you, if you would. Have that be a more of a secondary priority. And then also, to continue, the town has had a, a policy of folks that want to do private beaches and we have the additional material to be able to do those, to continue to provide that public service to the private sector, folk privately-owned beaches, that if we have the sand, to be able to sell that sand. But I wanted to at least lay that out. I know that's kind of a long time coming, Mr. Chairman, that's one that came up and I know that there's probably a fair amount of interest, so at least to report to the board that I have done the preliminary work for the board and if you want to schedule, however you want to handle it, a public meeting to have a discussion. Obviously, there's contractual obligation the town has in regards to Public Beach 22 that we need to be cognizant of as well.
Just for a little background for, for the new, new board members, last year, we had Beach 22. The residents of the area came forward again and asked us to put beach sand on that beach and to resolve some conflicts that had arisen over there again. And that's what led to what Chris just, just announced. So, Chris, we will sometime in June, early July, agenda this and invite those people back to, to hear the work that you've done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I ask a question on that regard?
Sure.
An issue some years ago was the path going down to that beach and keeping that clear and I think Amy put some, not snow fences that win, you know, stuff to stop the migration of the sand.
It was like siltation fence to try to sustain.
Vegetation, is that worked out?
More than once.
More than once?
Yeah, they seem to rip it out on occasion.
Okay.
It's a continuing process.
Okay. Thanks for the update or not thanks, I guess.
That concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Selectmen's report, Don.
I just have a request, actually. Now that we know you're chair for the upcoming year, at some point, if we could at least have an agenda discussion about our current legal representation, what it costs over the last several years.
We usually have that, don't we, Chris?
Yeah, actually, thanks for the opportunity. I know Attorney Giorgio was going to come in and do kind of an overview as to where we are with the litigation in regards to, I think if I understand the, the nature of the question, the, the appointment is a annual appointment that the board has, so if the board wants to make a change, then that's something that we would, we're not required by law to do a process. I would recommend that we do some kind of process if we were to entertain having somebody else come in, but we can certainly do that and similar to what I've done with the, the police chief search process and the finance director process, I can rough out a simplified process for if the town, if the board does want to make a change, what that process would entail. I have done it in, in another community to, to, you know, select a different, potentially a different attorney and certainly reduce a process.
Thank you. And to that point, Don, any board member that wants anything on the agenda, email me prior to, try and do it prior to Wednesday mornings because that's when we have our meeting. No later than, say, 10 o'clock on Thursdays and I can still get it on. If I have a question, I will call you, but try and put a title to it as well.
Appreciate that. All I was saying is something of a bigger box than the littler box that we're putting this in is that I'd like to look at what our alternatives are more globally, like how much are we spending, how much would it cost if we did it? How much would it cost if other people did it? So I'd like to just take a look at the whole thing. Not just have one person come in and say, we're doing this, would you like us to continue?
Sure. Send me that request and we'll, we'll put it together. Janelle?
I had the pleasure of attending Buies and Burlap, which was the first kind of craft show, I guess if you will. It's reclaimed items made into art and functional items as well. Over at the former middle school, which we need to rename, it was a really great show. They used the cafeteria and the music room and a little bit of the hallway when you first walk in toward the gym there. And this group is actually going to be back again in July and again in November, so they've already secured those, those dates and I would just like for the people to know that we should support that. It's really great.
Thank you.
Don't be modest. She was the presenter, though, on Memorial Day.
How about Memorial Day?
Don't hold out.
Yeah. Memorial Day celebration, I should have said, yeah, went off very well in the community center. Town band was great, great speaker, Mr. Armstrong, I forget his first name.
Jeremy.
Jeremy, really good speaker. He's a, he's really a hoot to listen to. That's the second time I've heard him speak. Yeah, it was good.
Julie?
I have nothing.
Larry?
Yeah, the, the town band is incredible. I'm very, very proud of them and you don't want me anywhere near anything artistic at all. I can tell you that for a fact. No, that's, that's it for me.
Okay, I'm all set. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.